Okay, everybody ready? It's seven o'clock and we're gonna call the meeting to order of the Monday edition of May 12, City Council and Hermiston Urban Renewal Agency to go to order. It appears we have a complete quorum. Everybody's here. Nice. As a reminder, the AV system is now working and operational, so all your words of wisdom will be sent out into the ether. Also, as a reminder, the microphones work exceedingly well now. They've done some upgrading on them, so they should be able to hear everything that you say. And so, at least that's what I'm told. I would please remind everybody in here to silence all cell phones. So same thing with the mics, you know, be careful sidebar conversations and such. Also, council's reminder, after staff presentation, I'll ask for questions from council first, followed by public comment, then ask for council comments. Please reserve speaking to questions and comments when asked. City Manager Smith, any changes to our agenda?
Yes, the public hearing to formation of LID 323 on Northwest Second and ordinance 2371, creating LID 323 is being rescheduled to our city council meeting on Tuesday, May 27, 2025.
Okay, so 8A and 9A have been rescheduled? Well, that's gonna cut stuff down a bit, isn't it?
Okay, and Mr. Mayor, did you mean to skip over the flag salute?
I did. I meant to do that. So at this point in time, since we've done all that other stuff, please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Even with a script, I can still make mistakes. Sorry, Lily. Okay, so with that, proclamations. So in a moment, I'm gonna read a proclamation supportive National Law Enforcement Week. And as I've noted on numerous occasions, I've been a cop for more than 40 years. During this time, I've seen the toll that the profession takes on the individual officers. From long hours that seem unappreciating to hearing that last call for fallen officers. It's a difficult, difficult profession. And unfortunately, over the weekend, the Umatilla County Sheriff's Office lost one of our own. K-9 Deputy Scotty passed away due to causes that have yet to be determined. So please keep him and his partner Sergeant Cody Markham in your thoughts and prayers. And with that, I'm gonna read the proclamation. In recognition, to recognize National Police Week 2025 and to honor those currently serving, those retired from service, and the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our community and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the 37 sworn and eight non-s sworn members of the Hermiston Police Department. Whereas on average, 55,000 assaults against law enforcements are reported each year, resulting in approximately 100 or 15,000 injuries. Whereas the first recorded death in 1786, just over 25,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the Hermiston Police Department, Ronald G. Kilby, end of watch Thursday, October 8, 1959. And whereas the names of dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, whereas 165 new names of fallen heroes from 2024 will be added to the National Law Enforcement Memorial. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City of Hermiston designates May 11 through May 17, 2025, as National Police Week and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in all communities across the nation. Signed this date by me, Doug Primmer, Mayor. That's a tough one. Any comments? All right. Citizen input on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to bring anything before the city council that is not on the agenda is asked to do the following. Please limit your comments to not more than five minutes. State your name and address and direct your comments to the chair. Anybody? Twice. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items A through F. Are there any questions regarding consent agenda items A through F? Any public comment on consent agenda items A through F? Any council comments on agenda items A through F? Seeing none to all the above, are there any items that need to be removed? Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items A through F?
Second.
Second.
And moved by Counselor Linton, seconded by Counselor McCarthy. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Well, at least we got it done, right? All right, motion passes unanimously. No items were removed. And from the consent agenda, A and eight and nine have been rescheduled. Next is item 10, adoption of the fiscal year 2425 Umatilla County Dispatch Agreement. City Manager Smith.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For a variety of circumstances, we, for this fiscal year, if we've not had a current IGA with the county for dispatch services, the IGA proposed, result of a lot of discussions between, between the county and, and the cities. The cities as a plural entity. We are, we appreciate the county working with us on this. The commissioners and other county staff have really kind of, kind of taken a more active role in these discussions. And so we were hopeful that, that, that that will continue. I did include in the staff report just some information about what we have paid since we started consolidated dispatch. Mostly to just express a concern that it's gone up a lot over the last five years in particular. So that's been part of our discussions with, with the county and working with them on that. But with, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, before we get started, I wanted to read a, a quick thing. As it relates to the subject before us and in the, in interest of full disclosure, I've had communication with the Oregon State Ethics Commission regarding any conversation about the dispatch center. As most of you know, my wife is the 911's dispatch manager for the sheriff's office, and I am reserve coordinator and a sergeant with them as well. And results of the conversation was, were that I have no conflict to disclose and may participate in the discussions fully. Counsel Roberts.
I was not so prepared as to write my statement out, but also for full disclosure, I work for the sheriff's office and the criminal division, not the communication division. My daughter is an on-time, or I'm sorry, an on-call dispatcher. And so I also contacted the Ethics Commission and was also advised that based on the circumstances, there is no conflict, and I can also participate in these proceedings.
With that, out of the way, okay, council questions?
I just have one.
Counsel Linton.
I just wanted to know on, it's page two of the staff report. Is two amounts in there. You have 654,319 dollars. Then you have 479,842 dollars. So I just wanted to know, is it?
So in the agreement, it's for 476,842. And that's kind of a negotiated amount that we worked out with the county. If we were to go with the current formula that had been being used, it would put our number at the 654 number. So I just wanted to show that, that if we were to look at, you know, cost increases over the last five years, that would have more than doubled our contribution. Gratefully, the county's been working with us to keep it a little bit lower. But ultimately, we're, we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna pay for dispatch. So that number could be closer to what it looks like in the future.
Hey, thank you.
And what did we actually pay?
Okay, so that right-hand column is what we've actually paid over time. And so in this current fiscal year, we will current, we will pay the 479, as long as you approve. If you tell me no, then I don't know, I'll have to go back to the county to talk about it. But what we're asking to pay this year would be the 476 number.
Counsel Brown.
For City Manager Smith, the 476,000, that's our part in, in the whole for, I guess, meaning for paying for dispatch, is that correct?
Correct.
Right. And of that 476, is that fairly representative of Hermiston? I guess, are we paying our fair share? Are we paying more than our fair share?
Well, I mean, like I, like I mentioned with the 654, if we were to go, the, the current formula goes a little bit like this. So the county has their cost for what it costs them to provide dispatch services overall. And we subtract out the 911 revenue that everybody pays, be either on your phone line or on your cellphone bill. And then it gets split up based on that in, into two, two pockets. One, the fire providers pay 11% of that, whatever that remainder number is. And then the law enforcement agencies pay the rest. Now, the county at this point has been taking a large chunk that's not based on any population number. It was a number that they, that we put in five or six years ago. And so, but even with that large, what I'll say is a plug number from the county, they, that, even with that, our share would be the 654 if we went purely based on population. And that's what the formula's been based on. There's been a lot of discussion lately about should we be going to more calls of service, which might more accurately reflect every jurisdiction's, you know, services that they're receiving. But not everybody's comfortable with that at this point, so we're still right now working on the population numbers. And so that's what the 654 would reflect our population based on this fiscal year. They've agreed to do the 479, or 476, 842, and we're continuing to have discussions.
Thank you.
Counsel.
Thank you. Has the county given any indication as to why the, their expenses seem to be skyrocketing over the last few years?
Well, I mean, they have added dispatch positions over that time. And, and, and then there was a contract renegotiation with the union in that time period. And so that, I think those would be the largest factors on the cost increases. And from our standpoint, we're not so upset about the large increases. Most of our concerns have been timing of those, of, of getting that information. Often, we would have presented our budget, it's been adopted, and then we get the number. And that's pretty rough from our standpoint. And so that's been our biggest concern. We would like to have some conversation ahead of time. Hey, we know union negotiations are coming up, and we think we're gonna have a bigger increase. Let's talk about that. Or, you know, we need, we feel like based on all these, the call volume we're seeing, we need to add a couple of positions. None of that's ever brought to us ahead of time, and that's some concerns as well. So we, we're trying to set up a process that, that kind of gets to that a little bit better.
And I recently did a ride-along along with Counselor Hayward. And I think, I don't wanna speak for him, but I, I was certainly impressed with what they do and how they do it. Has it, so I don't mean this to be derogatory in any way, but has the city undertaken even an informal feasibility study as to what it might take to spin up our own dispatch for our own city? I know Milton Freewater does their own.
Right, so we have not, I mean, prior to 2014, we did operate a dispatch center here in the city. And we have had, I, I will say we've had some preliminary conversations about a West County dispatch center, but not to the point of actually knowing what it would cost. I mean, just very preliminary. And at this point, we're still trying to work with the county to, to, to come to a, a good solution. But that is an option if we were to go further.
Thank you. Counsel Roberts.
Within that formula, does it, did the number of officers each agency have, is, is that factored into the formula at all?
No, right now, it's currently only population.
Okay, thank you.
And to follow up with Counselor Kelso's question. At what point do you think it would be to our best interest to look into possibly the, the City of Hermiston having their own dispatch?
Well, I, I guess I would like to give it some more time and discussions with the county. I don't know what that timeline is, but I'd like to give it some more time. I, I really do, I do believe in consolidation, that, that, that dispatch is a service that's best provided over a larger area. I think that's the, the better solution. And so I'd like to continue to work on that. But probably within the next 12 to 18 months, we would need, I, I think, if we can't get something that is workable, then we need to start looking at other, other alternatives.
And like Mr. Kelso said, you know, I don't mean it in a bad sentiment because I, I certainly appreciate being able to call, you know, 911, getting a representative on the other end to get the help that is needed, either for me or someone in my neighborhood. But I just think exploring some options that maybe is more feasible for the city would, would be good. But if it's in our best interest to stay with the county, then we kind of have, need to know, I guess, more answers from them as to why, like, how much more the, the rates will continue to increase so that the city is able to budget better for the services.
Yes, and I, I've expressed those concerns multiple times to the sheriff. I think the county's taking maybe a different, having a different person lead some of those discussions. I've been dealing a lot more with the commissioners and with Mr. Paul from their finance office. So maybe that will, we'll be able to have some different conversations related to some of that.
Okay, who hasn't had a chance to talk yet that needs one? Okay, second chances.
Okay, well, it's really not a normal way of business to have to set your budget and not have any of the details until later on.
Yes.
That is, and, and sign the, sign the contract.
Right, that's, I mean, that's the concerns I've been expressing to them for quite a while. And we haven't felt heard. So that's some of the concerns that I continue to have and hope to be able to resolve. We'll see how it goes with kind of maybe dealing more with the commissioners and with kind of the administrative side of the, of the county.
Well, it really isn't the way business is done, whether it be a regular business or governmental. You don't really sign contracts that we don't have any detail for. So.
Well, that's why, that's why we didn't have one until today, because I didn't have a number that I could say this is what we're gonna pay. So that's, and that's why we're asking, you know, kind of nine months late.
Counsel Roberts.
Are you saying that the county never gave you a number at all up until this point?
I'm saying I did not get, saying I did not get a number prior to the budget last year until we had published a budget.
Is that a number at all, or a number that you're not happy with?
No, that, that was not a number at all. Then the number they gave me was, was way above anything that we had even anticipated. Because we tried to plug a number that we thought would be good. It was 15% higher than that. And so that's where we went back to the county and said, hey, what's going on? And it took a lot of discussions back and forth before we got to where we are.
So that was last year's budget. You've had a number at some point up to this point that you've been working with, is that correct? You've been kind of negotiating with?
Right. I mean, we started with closer to that 654 number.
So I think for us in transparency, it's, it's important to note that it isn't that the county has not communicated with the city. There has been some negotiation there. And that's, that's to my point. It sounds like you're, you're under the impression that there's been no communication. And, and I just, I don't think that's a fair assessment.
Say that, Counsel Roberts. I didn't say there was no communication. I said, I had no communication when I proposed a budget to the city council last year. I had no communication. I didn't know what that number is. The chief and I had made an estimate, and I had to make a request to the finance office at the county, which I had not dealt with on this issue prior to. And so then, we started the discussions, and I had a number that was way out of line. And I said, can we keep talking about this? Because I only budgeted so much. How can we work in that? And so we've been going back and forth with those numbers. But we did not, when I, when you adopted, the council adopted last year that budget, we didn't know the number.
And I guess, to, to my point, I'm not saying that, that you did say that or didn't say that. It's just a matter of understanding for all of us, because in the staff's report, it says, "My biggest concern is that we have never heard about the reasons for the increase until after the fact." And that may have been true for last year, but for coming into this year's budget. And I say this as, and I'm trying to thread a needle and, and, and not wear both hats. But at the same time, I'm aware before I even put in my, my nomination or my, my candidacy for this seat, that there were correspondence back and forth. And so I think to say that there was never heard or any reasons or any communication, or even alluding to that is just factually inaccurate. And so I'm, I'm just, I'm not, I, I'm happy that we're getting a cheaper price. I'm happy that the, the county is working with us. I just don't wanna create bad blood by putting something out there that, that they're gonna take as being, wait a minute, we, we have been acting in good faith. And I don't know if that's true or not, because I wasn't in the room, but.
Well, to clarify that statement in my staff report, it's, it's based on the number of years before this. It's not necessarily talking about specifically this year. But many times, we would get the number, and it would be much larger, and we wouldn't know, did they add new positions? Did they not add new positions? No, we just got a number. And so that's what I was alluding to. It was not specifically this year, but many years in the past, where we didn't know why there was 15, 10% increases. We just didn't know. And frankly, I mean, that's the kind of communication I would like to have had. Is prior to that, here, this is what we've done, this is what we're working on, those kind of things.
And that's fair. It just, when I read that, I was thinking you were talking about the current negotiation, that we've had, never had any reasons until after the fact, and that just didn't sound correct to me. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
So.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Somebody commented online that they're not hearing everybody who's not talking right into the mic.
Okay.
Please try to talk into your mic.
Counsel McCarthy.
Just so I have a clear understanding of this report, because I've been hearing in the previous conversation, a lot of talk of this year and last year. The report in question is very specifically, I'm probably using the wrong word, but I would almost say is retroactive to what we would have adopted for a 2425, which is all we're talking about right now. A separate agreement would occur with this year's budget planning that we're adopting on Thursday. Well, at least meeting for on Thursday.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, um, my turn, right? Okay, um, so I, you know, I've heard a couple of people talk about the Hermiston forming their own dispatch center. Having been here when the previous dispatch was at Hermiston, when it was closed down and consolidated with the county. If I remember correctly, that number back then in 2014, the cost for dispatch was in the neighborhood of $700,000. And that's 11 years ago. So I'm sure that that number would be considerably higher today, just, just providing the, the basic services that they had back then. So that part of it, I don't think is gonna be something that we're gonna be looking too hard at. I would hope not anyway, because that would be of an even bigger cost for us to have our own dispatch. But that's just looking at, purely at, at those numbers from back then.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
Well, would it be any different than, like, the city manager said, having a West End kind of a dispatch, where perhaps our surrounding cities would be able to contribute like they do with the IT contracts?
Well, that's not a question that I am prepared to answer, because I am not a expert on, on the subject. So I do know that there are a whole lot of hoops and jingles that's gotta be gone through before a dispatch center can be opened. And I know that as a rule, this state has been closing down dispatch and consolidating dispatches, not opening up new dispatches. So that's just a, you know, a thing to keep in mind as well. Yes, ma'am.
Who would be included in a West End?
You know, it's been so preliminary, we haven't really. You know, it's been so preliminary, we haven't really talked in much detail. And to Counsel Doron's question, we we don't know yet what that looks like. I mean, like I said, it's been, we've talked about it at a high level, but we have not explored it in detail and not ready to go that far. But I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say we haven't thought about it and talked about it.
Any other questions?
Would it would a third option be to contract with a different agency to provide dispatch instead of going through Umatilla County?
Yes.
Uh, so a lot of the alternatives I'm hearing, this unless I'm incorrect, could only affect future IGAs and but wouldn't likely affect a decision that we made tonight.
Correct. I mean, the the IGA proposed before you would take a three hundred and sixty-five day notice to the county that we were not gonna need dispatch services. So we could not, I mean, would be at least that long.
Excellent. Follow up. What are the consequences of the council disagreeing with the proposal that's in front of them today? It's not one of the alternatives, but.
It it would um make it difficult, especially in trying to, you know, uh, there's been a lot of comments about being in good faith with the county. You know, we've tried to, uh, I haven't said anything tonight that I haven't said to county officials. And so I don't feel like anything I've said is is disingenuous and but we've we have verbally agreed to them that this for this year and we're, you know, seventy, sixty-five percent, seventy-five percent through the year. And we, you know, we've been receiving dispatch services, so we need to pay the bills for this year. And so that's, the consequences would put us in jeopardy in other ways, I guess.
Any other questions? Questions? All right. Seeing no more questions. Public comment? Seeing none. Council comments?
Again, I'm glad that the uh city staff and the county have been able to work together to come to this number and and it is beneficial to the city. And and I think that's good from this dais. That's that's my goal is to do what's good for the city. I would be uh open to seeing what the numbers would be uh for a consolidated West End Center. I'd be very skeptical that that would be in the best interest, but uh just knowing what I know, I I don't know how the numbers could get there. There's a lot that goes into that and so I would let the the sta- staff report on that. But as far as this agreement goes, uh, I'm glad that it's cheaper. I'm glad that it's good for the constituents. I'm glad that everybody's, you know, getting along and so I'm good.
Well, first I want to say I appreciate Counsel Roberts and Mayor Primmer uh for speaking to the Ethics Commission, especially on this matter. I think that that speaks really highly of of you guys, especially in in having a a conversation like this. Uh, I think that speaks to your guys' professionalism. So thank you both. As far as this contract, uh, this is definitely not the first time that this has happened. Uh, and so I know that we've had conversations about, you know, in the packet, kind of what this mentioned. I kind of took that. This isn't the the first time that we've had kind of issues with communication. And so uh especially when, as Counsel Myers has mentioned, when when you're planning a budget, uh, you know, timing and communication is really important to be able to make good decisions. And so um, you know, I support what we have going on in in this contract. Uh, I know City Manager Smith has been working and communicating with the county and officials there and um just hoping that the more and more that we communicate about this, the the better uh result that we'll get. And again, I know this isn't the first time we've had conversations like this. So uh I've had a conversation with the city manager. I I feel very confident about uh the relationships that we have established and uh I think everyone can agree that dispatch is an essential need for our community. That's, I don't think that's uh debatable really. I think that's something that everybody can agree on. But I think the communication is important, the timing is important, and I think the next year we'll get it right.
Any other comments? Well, again, all things being equal, you know, it's it's a uh, it's a necessary function that we have, you know, being a user of the system myself. So um and I know that the I know that the frustration on some parts of this that is that is shared is not just the city manager that has that that has that uh concern. There are other members, the other people that are involved in the entire process that are that have to deal with that. Unfortunately, it's a bureaucracy type issue. And so um, you know, what whatever we can do to support that respect, I think we need to uh continue on. So thank you, Mr. Smith, for continuing to work towards that goal. Um, so can I get a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five IGA for dispatch services as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Did anybody not move it? Okay, so you got the second then. All right. Wow, that's a that's a first. Okay, uh, so it's been motion, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. There you go, sir. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously and I would say yes if I could. Adoption of the RV park expansion agreement and license, City Manager Smith.
I'm just going to recuse myself because it involves AWS. Just to be safe, I'm just gonna recuse myself because AWS is a big push on this. I'm just gonna be safe.
Okay.
Okay, uh, a few months ago, uh, we were approached by representatives from Amazon Web Services talking about a need that their contractors have to be able to house all of the workers that they're bringing in to build the data center campuses. Uh, and so AWS is working with those contractors to try to um supply some additional uh housing options for for them. What they approached us was, would we be interested in partnering and building and then operating a uh RV park that would be kind of first serve their contractors and then uh be able to serve other um folks as well? And then also because um they also knew of our interest in building what we're gonna call a event RV parking facility at EOTech. That was one of the reasons they approached us is to be able to help build that facility as well as a facility that would serve um their contractors. We took a look at what that would look like, get um, had some discussions about a number and then uh really started working towards the agreement that uh I was able to send to you over the weekend. We are excited about this option. I wanted to kind of just show you as we take a look at the EOTech site. So uh from the standpoint of the what we call the event parking, um, it in the master plan for EOTech, it's kind of this corner of the property is where that was originally planned. And with that, with adding to it some kind of year-round type camping or parking uh options, uh, we are still in uh working with our partners, with the fair, the rodeo and EOTech staff to determine where um this year-round facility might best serve uh the facility and the community. And so um the agreement and the draft I sent to you over the weekend, uh, there's been a bit, a little bit of a change um proposed to that. I don't have a final version and I'm gonna ask that you approve um my signature on that with some small slight adjustments. And basically what that's gonna say is just, it adds a couple of steps for final site selection and approval of that and um both with the agreement of both Amazon and city, the city staff. So um basically, uh, we're we're looking at options on, you know, current EOTech property and some options that are maybe on property that is adjacent or near to. So um we want to get through that process as quickly as possible because as the agreement shows, you know, they would like it built yesterday because they have a need yesterday. And so we're gonna try to move as quick as possible, but our end date would be the end of calendar year twenty twenty-six. My goal and our intention would be to have it finalized before the fair and rodeo next year. So uh that's our um targets and that's kind of what's reflected in in the the proposed agreement. And at that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Litten. I have quite a few questions.
All right.
Only had, took me a little while to get through it. So I just wanna, first I wanna, sorry, let me move my mic. First, I would like to ask, does the city of Hermiston own the property? We own the property and.
Okay, that's one of the changes that uh in the new could be, it could be property to be acquired by the city. Because there's potential that the site might not be on the property we currently own.
Okay, okay. Will Hermiston have to put any money upfront?
Um, no, I mean, all the the payment schedule would would cover our costs.
Okay, so Amazon would buy the land and then.
Not necessarily Amazon, but we would buy the land, it would be paid for by Amazon. They're not gonna be the per- the group going and acquiring the land. That's why I say it that way.
Okay.
They're gonna, they're gonna transfer money to us that would be available for that if we needed it.
Okay. So the one point five million, we at the beginning, will will it cover the cost of paying for the land and then starting the building? Or do you know?
Well, that that we're not, that amount, I'm not a hundred percent sure of. We're actually working with our partners, the rodeo and the fair, that they might participate in some of that initial cost. But that and it that one point five is to help get us designed and the first part of construction.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out whether or not we're gonna have to come out of our budget in order to buy the land before they send in money to start the building.
We we will not.
We will not. Okay. Uh, let me go to my next, oh, three point four, so that you can look it up. I can't find it now. I'm having a hard time finding the page. But on three point four, okay. I was thinking. Thank you. Um, I don't agree with that paragraph and what it's saying for it. And I don't agree with the whole thing. I think it should be um voided out or revised.
Well, what that what that paragraph is it is uh doing is giving the opportunity for once, once they're done at some point in the future, if they want to make these spaces not obligated for Amazon-related use, that then they terminate this agreement and then we would be able to rent it, rent those spaces to whoever might be willing and need them.
Okay, um, I have, I'm gonna go to another question. I might might come back to that one. My next question is, uh, when does the initial payment of users start and how much daily, weekly, or monthly? Will they be, um, have you uh agreed on that amount yet? Or are the users being because Amazon is paying this money upfront? Will they be able to park their RVs there free because they're employees or do they pay any type of rate?
No, they're they're gonna pay rental fees and it will be paid by the individual person, not by AWS, because it might be someone who works for the general contractors who are building the facilities or the electricians or whoever. And so and we have not come up with our rate schedule. I mean, we're that's kind of in our future steps to determine our costs and then we would charge based on what it costs us to operate the facility.
Okay, have you figured out those amounts yet of what you want to do?
We have not.
Still working on it?
Yes.
Okay. If anybody wants to step in, because I have quite a few more questions.
Just get them out of the way.
Okay. Four point, three point two. It was, I think it was in four point three two, I think it was saying um about the users that are not non-Amazon rental after ten years? Or when does it begin for the non-users?
Well, it would, it could begin based on the terms that are in the agreement. It could begin immediately if, let's say, they only need fifty out of the hundred spaces. We could rent the other fifty to other people until we had need from Amazon-related users.
Okay, thank you, because I was thinking that was after ten years. But um I I noticed that it said that uh if a non-user comes in, that they would have to leave if Amazon needed that space. And I was thinking, because it'd be on a daily uh basis, why can't we do it on like a weekly basis, let them know, okay, you can be here a week, but no longer than that if someone comes in instead of a a day? Because someone can move in today, then the Amazon person comes along and now they have to move out after one day uh and try to find another place to park their RV.
Well, I mean, we haven't adopt, I mean, writ- written all of our policies how that's gonna work exactly. Um, we're gonna try, we're gonna try to be a a good steward of it and not, you know, I we'll we'll do the best we can.
Okay.
But I mean, Amazon's building it and so they're gonna get some the preference. And so we're gonna do the best we can to accommodate other users, but they're gonna get first preference.
Okay, um, before I go on and ask some more ques- questions, um, so since you're still working on a lot of things, you want us to vote on this tonight for this to be signed in or or what's the?
Yes, uh, I mean, this will allow us to start the final design. I mean, we we've done some tentative design, but we, I mean, we we have a lot of work to do before we can get to construction and if we want to meet these other deadlines. But uh the the usage agreement, I mean, the usage is gonna be something we work a little bit more because just we don't know how are they gonna designate, you know? How are we gonna know that they're Amazon-related and making sure we can verify that? There's a lot of work that we still have to do that will really uh come into a separate agreement that we work out with them.
Okay. I'm just having a little bit of diff- difficulty in that with some of the things that are going to be added that maybe uh or changed that maybe before we vote and pass it, that those things are in there already before it's signed? That's where I'm thinking right now. Okay, so uh let me see what my next question is, want to make sure I'm not asking the same thing. Okay, and four point four. Um, I was wondering uh if this clause could have a just clause for termination and Hermiston will not pay Amazon twenty dollars a day for each parking space after the initial ten-year lease. I don't think we should have to come out of uh the not us, well, us as voting in to pay for to them money for just cause.
That that twenty-dollar fee only pertains to the initial term.
Can you explain?
The first ten years. That's the only time that that could would apply if, for example, there were no spaces or we were not able to make spaces available. That's when that twenty dollars per day per day would be applicable.
Well, I'm um asking if a just cause could be added and modified into there so that if it's a just cause, we wouldn't have to pay the twenty dollars a day. I'm not a lawyer, I'm just asking.
Well, I mean, I Well, I mean, I don't see, again, I'm not a lawyer either, so.
Well, Mr. Toby.
I know, but I don't see a place for just cause in the, in the language of that termination because basically it's saying if we term, if we terminate the agreement ahead of time, you know, they've made an $8 million investment and then we terminate ahead of time even for just cause, we, they're asking that we pay them $20 a day for those spaces.
Okay, but?
Because they've invested all that money upfront.
Yes, I, I understand that, but I'm still thinking, uh, if we, how it could be worded in there, that if it's just cause, we do not have to pay them the $20 a day. That's what I'm saying. Can it be worded that way, Mr. Toby?
I mean, I mean, he's not going to be able to answer that right, I mean, right on the spot, I, I don't, frankly, I don't, I don't feel like I can negotiate for something like that because I don't, I, I don't see that as a fair. I, I think the way it's written, from my standpoint, it's fair to both of us because they paid for it and we agreed to provide it and then we don't? Even, I, I can't think of a just cause for that, I can't think of something that would be for us to do, that's my explanation.
So even if we had to do that, which, you know, would be hard to imagine, if we were charging, if we had people in those places, we would be charging and that money would be made up by that, by the person in that space, so it really wouldn't be coming out of our pocket, so to speak.
Correct, it would be coming out of the revenues of the, of that.
Okay.
Park, would be my, that would be how I would structure it, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Um, have more questions you got?
Oh geez, I have, not counting that one, probably 14.
How about you pick a couple more and then let's, let somebody else have a chance?
Well, I'm, if someone wanted to go ahead and ask some questions, I can then come back.
Yeah.
I don't mind that, that's what I was trying to say earlier.
All right.
I probably didn't say it well.
And city manager Smith, uh, when the county and the city kind of worked out EOTech, uh, when the city received EOTech, was there kind of a, was there language in there for an RV park?
Yeah, that was one of the commitments that we made, that we would construct an RV park for event-style camping, yes.
So would this, this adoption proposal here, from what I understand, would knock two birds with one stone, not only would create an RV park, right, but also something, another asset to the city, essentially?
That's correct.
So we would be fulfilling kind of the, the contract of when we received EOTech from the county?
Correct, and, and I would say it creates two assets in that way and, because we'll be operating the park and be able to utilize the revenue from that as well as have the event-related camping available for events that take place at EOTech.
Thank you.
I'm just thinking, anybody want to?
Go ahead.
No one else? Okay, because I didn't quite understand that last conversation because with the EOTech, it was supposed to be their, um, RV park, not Amazon, this is totally separate and Amazon, people will have the right, am I correct, to, um, park there first?
Okay, so this would create two parks, essentially?
Oh, two RV parks?
Right, so it would, it would have us build, what we had planned is in our master plan, an event-related space, in this area is what we're initially working towards. That would be utilized during fair, when, when all the families come up there with their, and their kids are taking care of 4-H animals and all of that type of thing. Plus, for when we have, uh, I know, uh, Al does events with ropings and barrel races where there's many people who come and they have RVs or trailers that they're, and so they would be able to utilize that in those times. And then also now that we're just getting started with heroes and the, the sports fields out in the front, this would also be available for tournaments and things like that for both lacrosse, soccer, seven-on-seven, football, any other type of events we might be able to attract. So there would be that space and then there would be, and envisioned, this would be completely fenced off, this other park would not have open gate access to the EOTech facility, it would be attached and next to, hopefully, but it would not have open access to it, that would be year-round camping, uh, facility first for Amazon contractors and Amazon-related, um, people.
So we would own the Hermiston, not we, Hermiston will own that RV park while Amazon on the other, no, Amazon?
Amazon, we're going to own it, we're going to operate it.
Okay.
People who work for Amazon will rent it from us.
Okay, alrighty.
We own it, they're paying for it.
Hmm?
We, we own it, but they're paying for it.
Yeah, dedicated use, like?
Okay.
Yes.
That, I got it. I'm going to skip over that question. On my one question, and let me see, I think it's in 4.9, let me double check, uh, it has to do with indemnification. I wanted to know if Hermiston was that party or Amazon was that party or both of us were that party?
We're, we're both indemnifying each other in certain circumstances.
Okay. Let me see.
Do you mind if I break in here?
Oh, no, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City manager Smith, do you, do you sense that this may adversely impact the rental market or the property value market if contractors who currently own or rent houses in the area? Sell them and, and go to the RV park?
My understanding is that the, no, because they can't find enough space to be in currently. So everything that's out there right now would stay being used and this would allow more people to be here.
Okay, and don't answer this if it's not appropriate to, but have you had any preliminary conversations with any of the surrounding property owners?
Yes.
Gage their interest?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just checking. Okay, let me see here, I think I'm gonna go, I'm skipping some questions because I think you've answered those and, um, in 15, no, not 15, 17, um, this will be my, oh, I'm wanting to know why, if anything were to happen, why would we want to, Hermiston would want to waiver a jury trial? Hopefully, nothing will happen, but why?
Number 17.
Yes.
So that's number 16 in the agreement, and that's just a standard clause that we have in a lot of our contracts, waiving jury trial just allows us to go in front of a judge. Has pros and cons, but generally, when you can try things in front of the judge, we're able to put information in front of them, uh, I think for both of us, we see, uh, good results, so that's why I have that in there.
That's all my questions, thank you.
Any others? All right, seeing none, how about, uh, public comment? All right, no public comment, uh, now council comments. Council room.
Just kind of speaking more from the EOTech committee standpoint, a couple of years ago, we were talking about priorities and what, what we could do up there at EOTech and the priority number one was the barns, which that got done, uh, we did have water rights and the RV park, uh, next, uh, number two, number three respectively, working on the water rights right now and it sounds like the RV park is going to go, be good to go if we adopt this, so, a lot of exciting stuff going on in EOTech, so, uh, have fun having conversation with the stakeholders, but other than that, I think this is going to be, this is going to be a great asset for the community.
Other comments, councilor?
And it was an asset that was put in place when we were doing EOTech and has always been, although controversial, a priority.
Yes.
The only controversial part is where, where it was to go.
Correct.
Counselor?
Thank you, I just want to say I think this is an exciting opportunity that AWS is affording for the city, um, this is something that people in the community have been talking about, why don't we have an RV park up there, it could be a revenue generator for the next 50 or 100 years and we would own the property. This is also, I think, an exciting, um, opportunity to acquire surrounding, uh, land and expand our EOTech presence, so I'm all in favor of this, I think it's, and yet another, um, boon from having AWS in our area.
Counselor?
Well, and it also brings new people that hopefully may fall in love with the area and decide to stay here long after they're done with the work that they're doing, you know, with, uh, with the centers. So thank you.
Um, I think it's, um, probably going to be crucial that we also want to communicate how the funds for this project are, are coming, um, not just for, we're not spending a bunch of taxpayer dollars for it necessarily, but also that there are, um, how money from Amazon is being utilized and spent because I, I know some of the traffic that we get from some of the online communities thinks it's all going to the eight of us up, or nine of us up here, uh, which is, for the record, not happening, um.
Yeah.
But just to know that this is an initiative entered into that's beneficial for both parties interested and even just for people, just during the week of fair, even just, even people in Hermiston who need to use those spaces and all sorts of other things, so I think it's great, but I think we also should probably take some initiative in communicating how funds for this project are being used and, and, uh, and what the contributions we're receiving are.
We'll do our best, but I, I can't speak for the online community.
Well, listen, we do our part, you know, at least we've done our part. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I am not for this contract at this time, I think that it should be tightened up a little bit more and I understand that it's going to be two RVs, we'll own the second one and, uh, and money will be coming in from Amazon, but I think the contract should be modified somewhat.
Any others? My turn. Building two facilities, basically, or, or modifying, modifying slash building, acquiring with money that is not ours, but we get to keep what we, we buy. That's, that's a deal you don't get very often, I mean, I'd, I'd like a car like that, you know, I mean, I am, I, I have to, I have to say I am a little, a little concerned at, you know, that the, the wording that you're saying is, is that, uh, you know, you don't, you're wanting us to approve something that is not fully fleshed out. That causes me some, some concern. But, uh, overall, I think it's, you know, I think it, it, to echo pretty much everyone in that, that, uh, you know, the money that we're getting for, for building something that we don't have to put any money into at all is a win for the community, so. With that, uh, can I get a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the RV park expansion agreement and license?
So moved.
Second?
Been moved by Councilor Barone, seconded by Councilor McCarthy. We'll call.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-1 with Councilor Litton in abstention, or I mean, in disagreement and Counselor Hayward being recused, recusing himself not being present. With that, motion passes and let's bring Counselor Hayward back. Don't want to get lost or fall asleep right there. And once he walks in the room, then we can say, committee reports, anybody have any committee reports that they wish to report on? Counselor Roberts?
Yes, on May 7th, I attended the airport advisory board meeting, uh, some exciting stuff going on up there, uh, lots of planes taking off, uh, it is crop dusting season, so, um, they are seeing a huge increase in traffic, uh, a little bit behind in fuel sales, uh, but they're hoping that could pick up. Surprising to me is that live flight, uh, the month before averaged about two or three flights a day, which is, um, a lot of traffic for them and so, um, that's, uh, not always an emergency, sometimes that's just transporting people, but they are very busy up there and they're good partners for us to have. The hangar project is, uh, still underway, um, they should be pouring concrete, uh, scheduled to be done by May 20th, uh, hopeful completion sometime in August, but they have been having setbacks on this project, uh, a few times and so that's still kind of a soft date, I would say, um, but they are hopeful for it, uh, to be finished in August. And then, uh, continuing the work to, uh, uh, acquire the adjoining land, uh, that's going to be, uh, a good thing. And then finally, uh, there's some potential lease opportunities, uh, for the land outside of, uh, the gate, like right next to Head Start, we've got a business looking at, uh, uh, building up there and, and leasing some land, so that'll be, uh, a good thing for the airport as well.
Okay, thank you.
We had Parks and Rec meeting on Thursday night, um, I'm going to have to let Maria take part of this because I can't read it, um, pickleball court was the big topic. And we have like, at the very least, 12 pickleball rules that Brandon has already laid them out here, uh, so that people will know what they're getting into when they go in there to play.
Good job.
I can read them if you'd like.
Court free usage of the court or pick, rules of pickleball?
No, the rules of our pickleball court. Yeah.
Go ahead and read them.
No, thanks.
Is that it? Maria, you got more to add to that?
Um, well, we had, uh, some discussion, um, we were pleasantly, those in attendance were pleasantly surprised, um, and liked the May new monthly newsletter that was sent out, thank you for doing that, we thought it was pretty concise and, um, with good information. We, there was also information about, right now, how there's been like an evaluation being done on, on the trees around the parks, around the area to make sure that, uh, but selected by Arbor Pro, um, where they are taking inventory of the trees, um, I guess they look at the circumference, the biology, the size, you name it, of the tree to make sure that they're nice and healthy and, uh, so, um, they're being looked at, like little did I know that if you cut a branch and if it doesn't withstand the wind, that it could really damage the tree? Who knew? But there's also, uh, some trees that were planted, uh, here on Main Street that perhaps are, they're being looked at because they may have to be redone or removed and replanted, but more information to come later. And, uh, there was a lot of information about the pickleball courts and also about the Columbia Ridge Park possibly, about, um, the area that is potentially being looked at, where , uh, there will be 250 homes, it's, they're going to be next to the canal back there by the airport area. And so, um, looking at that potential of finding area for, for a park as well as Oasis Park, that, uh, is going to be about nine acres. Can't remember everything else, but we also mentioned, um, some of the events that are coming up, um, this month with the second graders from the Hermiston School District, um, attending the, or learning how to swim, uh, it's a great event for many of the kids for safety, uh, reasons. And also, uh, some of the things that were discussed that, that you guys know because it has been, uh, publicized. because it has been publicized is the May seventeenth, how there's going to be a community recycling over at New Hope and the hazardous household waste collection that is going to take place at the Yumitilla County Fairgrounds Office. And it's supposed to be a very huge event. A lot of, a lot of volunteers needed for that event. And the swim lessons opened up on Friday, May ninth. I don't know how many people, you know, turned up for that event, but usually they get filled pretty quick. I think people know about the swim lessons and they try to get in as fast as they are offered. And Brandon gave us a rundown on some of the projects that have been completed, like the Riverfront Park, the Read and Walk Trail, the Skate Park, the irrigation and grass install was completed, the food pod, the picnic pavilion, which was a great addition for those that like to go so they can get some shade. The Harkin Riders Center, the basement renovation was complete, the Greenwood Park, the fence was repaired, the Heroes Project. The improvements were done, the community center, the, the work that had to be done because of the water issue there and the EOTech tree planting. And Brandon, please feel free to add something that I might have forgotten.
I do have one to add would be the pickleball ribbon cutting Oh, yes. on June fourteenth. I can read that one.
What, what time at June, on June fourteenth?
Be at eleven AM.
Any other public committees? Seeing none. Mayor's report, me, my turn. I saw the, the new report put out by the city, outstanding. I appreciate that. That's a lot of good information. I think that that's going to make a world of difference to a lot of people. So, you know, one of the things, like you said, that came out of that, the, the city's Civic Leadership Academy, yeah, that, you know, that was one of the things that was brought forward from that. And, you know, where, where people get their information. And so providing, providing that type of information is, is going to be, I think is going to, is going to help us with some of the things that, you know, we've even discussed tonight as being, you know, getting information out to the public so that they know what we're doing and why and when and how and all the good stuff. So I, I'm excited about that. Me personally, I attended a couple of different conferences. The Oregon Mayors Association had a, had a meeting during the LOC conference in Coos Bay. Myself, Counsel Litten and, and Mr. Smith attended that. A lot of good information we received during that. It was, you know, I got to meet a bunch of mayors and got to talk about some of the problems that we all tend to share. The mayor from Grants Pass was particularly helpful in regards to, you know, what he's having to go through during, with the homeless fight that he's currently involved in. You know, he's on the front line on that one, right on the tip of the spear, so to speak. So a lot of, lot of, a lot of help. Again, meetings, I've attended, I don't know how many different meetings, pretty much one every day for the last three weeks. But I did get a really nice, cool thing. I got to go with the second graders out to the recycled water plant. Wow.
Explain that.
One, well, I had, you know, each one of them had received a certificate for participation in it, which Lily provided me with, a stack to sign by myself, which was all right. But the kids there, they were, they were energetic, I think would be a good word. I was really, really, really happy to find that none of them went overboard anywhere into any of the water-related events that occur out there, so.
Reach anything.
They couldn't reach anything, but they were, a lot of, a lot of questions that were asked. You know, the, the gal that was working in the lab, she, I don't know how she managed. She'd be, you know, she had to redirect because, you know, she'd talk about bugs in the water and next thing you know, we're talking about roly-polies and earthworms and such. And so she, she was able to, to divert a lot of questions, but it was, there was a lot of energy there from those ones. And I would, just the tenth, a tenth would be great. But a lot of stuff going on. Happy to see you with, with the, the events that we have coming up. And I'm sure that our council president's going to be more than happy to explain some of those things because he does it better than me. So, under your mark, to set, go.
All right, well, of course, Counsel Ron mentioned that on Saturday there's the hazardous waste collection and community recycle. That's also coincides with I Love My City. So if you happen to be volunteering for that, make sure you're showing up. Also, Family Health and Fitness Day at EOTech. So if you're participating in one or all three of those things, make sure that you allocate time. So I'm sure traffic along Airport Road is going to be tricky that day. Family Health and Fitness Day, of course, formally in September, so they've moved it. So make sure you pay attention to that. A few other things that we haven't talked about in the past, but one that's near and dear to me, there's a newer organization called Hands and Feet. They're an organization designed around caring for foster families. They're doing a color walk at ten AM in Grecian Height Park in Pendleton. That is a thirty dollar registration fee. You can do so by going to hermistonlive.com or just Hermiston Live. Look for the calendar on Google. And there is a QR code where you can register. Also Armed Forces Day happening at the Rees Training Center off exit one seventy-seven off I-84. So those are all happening basically all around ten o'clock. All of those things happening at the same time. So you'll have your fill of morning and early afternoon activities on Saturday. And that's all I've got.
Okay, well, I'm going to step back and I forgot to, I wanted to ask anybody. I was, I was approached regarding the Fall LOC Conference Planning Committee. If anybody wants to be a part of that or, you know, feels, feels, when they need to be a part of that, please let me know. Yes, sir. You want to, you're letting me know? Okay.
And while I'm at, I did, speaking of LOC and trainings, we did mention earlier that the Ethics Commission, some people have talked with them and they will be hosting, I'm attending on Wednesday in Yumitilla, their Public Meetings Law Session at four o'clock. And then, of course, just as a reminder to everyone, we have our budget meeting here on Thursday at five thirty.
What he said. See, that's the reason why I have, because he's really good at that.
Five o'clock dinner, five thirty to actually get down to business.
All right, that it? Cool. Council reports. Counsel Litten.
Just to add up to a couple of things you said about LOC meeting. Thanks. Just to add a couple of things. The council people there were also talking about the different things that were the same, just happening with them as with all the other cities. But there was a speaker there and he asked the question, what do we want to be known for ten years from now? And then he gave us a few ideas there. Then they also talked about ChatGPT, that we probably should learn how to do some of that stuff. And they gave us some sites that would teach us because that's the future. I don't like technology that much, except for the phone, you can call and text, that's it. Then Ms. Mulville, she talked about HB thirty, thirty-one, Community Infrastructure and Housing Development Funding. SB one seventy-nine, Recreational Immunity. And HB three, six, four, four, Oregon's Housing Crisis. Can't read my own writing there. Looking, and they're looking for two hundred and seventy million dollars for exiting. And the last thing I wanted to bring up, that I brought up before, my sensitive subject on salaries. I feel that we have some very good people here and I feel that they're doing very good jobs. But the way our climate is, we don't know who will get down the future. And what I'm looking at is that as leaders that are fiscally responsible and, as we say, love our city, that we should have something in place for the future. Of that, some of the smaller towns, and I was really surprised by this one town. Seven thousand and the city council's getting three hundred a month. And then there was city manager. I said, can you tell me what size your town is and how much you're getting? She was forty-one. I said, I don't want to know the exact, just give me a, oh, no, I'll tell you exactly what I'm getting. And she did. And her town is forty-one million, she said, and I deserve what I'm getting because I have a two hundred million dollar budget, which I had no problem with that. That's not my business, that's their city's business. And so I, a few people that were doing the council jobs got paid zero dollars. And they, you know, all the positions were filled. I even asked online on my, on my account, if I gave you a range, would you move to Hermiston and work if you were qualified? And three people said yes. So I'm just saying, I'm not trying to say anybody here is bad. I'm saying that I feel we should have something in place for the future. You know? Because you don't know what you get. I want a four hundred million dollar jet, I will take it right now, even if I'm not allowed, I will do it. That's all I have to say.
Okay. What else? Counsel Baron.
You know, I don't know who to give props to on this. I don't know if it was HES or UEC or maybe a different agency, but I was driving down the road and normally, like, I looked at, I don't always look at the poles or, you know, the electrical poles or something like that, but they were perfectly straight. And I was like, you know, I think somebody moved these or like adjusted them, but they were really, really nice. And it was kind of crazy how it actually made the entire neighborhood look a lot better, but it was really nice. So it was just kind of random and I didn't know if it was UEC, HES or some other agency. But when they straightened out the poles, it, it made the neighborhood look like way nicer than. So I, I just want to let the, whether that's city or UEC or someone.
Well, since it's a good thing, I'm taking credit for HES. And I'll pass it on to Nate.
But looked fantastic, so.
Copy, straight poles. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I haven't noticed our poles, but now I'm going to be looking everywhere I go for straight poles. I was able to attend the Cinco de Mayo event at EOTech on the fourth and I had a great time, had some good food and listened to some nice music and shook a few hands. It was a good time. So I highly encourage you to go next year if, if you're at all available. I think I saw Counsel Roberts up there too, a little bit, so that was nice. I was able to attend a Pendleton City Council meeting on the sixth, which was interesting. Everybody was in a suit and a tie and the women were dressed to the nines. And I was really impressed. I was like, wow, what's going on here and why are we such slobs? And then I realized that it's picture day, it was picture day. So they kind of fooled me there for a couple of hours. And it was very interesting. They talked about the mixed curbside recycling that's coming up and the, the coming rate increases there and the delay in getting that program off the ground because they have issues like I'm sure everybody across the state is having. And they also talked about their problem keeping their, their courts above water. Apparently they're losing quite a bit of money every year running their court system over there in Pendleton. So that was an interesting conversation. And I learned a lot, so I hope to go back at some point in the near future. That was a, a great meeting to attend. Finally, I was proud to be able to transport some of our Hermiston High School kids to a Schnitzer Cares Event. If you guys have heard of Schnitzer Steel, they had an event over in Pendleton and the Schnitzer Foundation, what they do is, they call it a grant-making system where students raise money for causes that they feel are important. And then the Schnitzer Foundation greatly adds to the amount that the students have raised. And then at this ceremony that we went to, the students got to present the big check to their causes. And I'm happy to say that some of the causes here that were awarded money included stepping stones and Eastern Oregon missions. So I was very happy to see that. And it was a great time. We have great kids going to Hermiston High School and surrounding high schools who are very interested in serving their community and are deeply involved in some ways. So, thank you, that's my report.
Outstanding, good to hear. Counsel Baron.
Well, and one of the awardees actually, that was presented with some money, actually contacted me and they wanted to do an event so that they could inform our community members on laws that pertain to immigrants. So that was something that was initiated by students that they were going to be awarded. And then this agency, in return to contribute back to our community, decided to do a presentation. So I totally appreciate, you know, their efforts. We were able to go to the ribbon cutting ceremony, to the new counseling office over by where the hair salon, yeah. And Counsel McCarthy, Mr. Kelso and I were able to attend. It was, you know, a nice ceremony. It's nice to see other services being provided to our community members and excited, you know, for those that will benefit from the service. And I also want to thank the Parks and Rec folks that are in charge of our parks because I often get a lot, hear a lot of feedback, how well-kept our parks are. And, you know, just how it's nice for people to be able to walk, feel safe and be able to enjoy the parks. So thank you, because I know that it's, it's a lot of work, especially during our summer months.
Then, Tidoki, Counsel Roberts.
So, yes, I attended my first Cinco de Mayo event and that was quite fun. I apologize, I didn't see Counsel Kelso. He obviously saw me, but we were wandering around and got to buy some stuff from Mother's Day. I found some, some sweaters up there that were, were kind of cool. So look forward to going up there again. At the mayor's request, as you remember, he asked us to attend various meetings around the area. And I attended the Board of Commissioners meeting. I have to openly admit, I was there because I was supposed to be there, but I'm, I'm counting it. I'm counting it, so. The, that's right. The, the, the portion on supplemental budgets and budget transfers was riveting. I'm just going to say, transfer in and out of this fund and into that fund, so yeah, there you go. But one noteworthy thing was that they are considering a camping and public ordinance for time, place and manners. So the county is dealing with the same things that we've been dealing with here in the city. And so it's going to be interesting to see how that takes shape and, and how we can, we can all kind of collectively work in, inside the city. We've got regulations and so outside the city, you know, we've got Oxbow Trail thing that's affecting our communities, but is not in the incorporated city limits. And, and so we're working, or the county's working to, to kind of get some, some guidance, some regulation and some teeth into that process. So probably the most exciting thing that came out of it, though, was a flyer that I, I picked up. It's for the twenty twenty-five Eastern Oregon Regional Veterans Stand Down and Resource Event. And I had not heard of this before, but apparently it's an annual event for, for veterans and it's, it's geared heavily toward veterans who are either jobless or experiencing homelessness, but it's for any veteran. And so they, they have crisis and emergency resources, VA resources, behavioral health, also information on pension benefits and surplus items. They got an onsite barber for people to get haircuts, for veterans to get haircuts. So very exciting. So if you are a veteran or if you have a family member who's a veteran and want to go check this out, it is Saturday, June fourteenth, from nine AM to noon at Wild Horse Resort in the Rivers Event Center. That's it.
Any others? See, Manager Smith.
I was just glad to hear that some of you have seen the new city newsletter that's out. And I would invite you to share that with as many people as possible and they can sign up so that they can be on the list to receive it each month. We're trying to expand that list. It's kind of a soft rollout as far as just using the list that we have, but please encourage people to sign up. And then just so you know, next week, this week is Police Week, next week is Public Works Week.
Well, you don't see a proclamation in here for that. Well, I proclaim that. All right, any other? We have no youth advisor, so any other business for the good order? We're adjourned.